Okay, may we have your attention? The current city council meeting for Monday, September 10th, 2018 is now called to order at 6:12. Ms. Dickie, roll call.
Councilman Brian Rowland.
Present.
Councilman Jonathan Randall. Councilman Kendrick Jones. Councilwoman Wendy Williams here. Councilman Exontae Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And now, we'll have an invocation. Ms. Miller, if you would do us the honors of a brief blessing of the meeting, and then we'll stand for the, you may stand in the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we've come here today to just say thank you. Thank you for all that you have blessed us with and all that you are going to do to see that this city and this community can come in unison together as one. Lord, bless everyone that has made it here safely today. Give us traveling grace to make it back home safely. And just continue to pour your blessings upon this city and this community so that we can all come together and understand and be one and all for one under God. Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
It's over there. I'm sorry, ma'am. We took photographs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being, just as a whole.
And if we could have a brief moment of silence for the PBA and any other student that lost his life in our city last week. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Citizen comments? Please let the record show, Mr. Councilman Johnson, who pointed us. Mr. Ron Leverett. Citizen comments?
Just a few brief requests. One request I want to start with, asking again, the city council to take a really serious look at strategic points in place on streetlights, in places that I've asked for several months, on several occasions, and again, on Highway 290, Amuse Road, Mr. Mayor and council, I witnessed accidents there. And I would invite any of you to join me in watching the darkness on 290 and the potential death that's probably gonna happen pretty soon. I hope not. But it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense for us to, I notice we are putting light streetlights in certain places, but I think the incident rate at Highway 290 and Amuse Road is prone to happen real soon. And I'm asking you know that, you would do, you know, that constitutes an emergency. And I think that is, and the problem is, if you're coming down that road, if you're not, if you're not familiar with that road, because the railroad track on the other side, it appears that the stoplight is on the other side. When you come to that corner, if you're not familiar with it, you're being out into 290 thinking that the light that you see over across the railroad track is the end of Amuse Road. So I urge you to take a serious look at that. Another item that I would like for you all to really consider, I notice that we're coming to our meetings that are lasting some three to four hours, and our legal bill, I'm sure that the company, the company that represents us, in terms of assisting you, and this is from experience, along with most of you know that the cost, legal fees are very expensive. And I think that, I don't know what your legal bill is, but as long as the companies that say, the business time that they stand, stay, stay determined in some of the general laws that we understand, procedural procedure, I think that you ought to save the city quite a few dollars in cutting back on legal fees. And also, that brings to cutting it down on some of the reports, like I mentioned in our last meeting, I think some of the reports that you give could be cut back in that you asked for written reports. And I think that the written reports could be disseminated among each of you to take, to also save some time, because oftentimes that some of the deliberation that I think that you use, I think that we could disseminate it among each other and make some effective use of it. Thank you.
Ms. Bell Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Allen and councilmembers. I'm here today just simply to say that I have some serious concerns because of some safety issues, which certainly have concerned me as well as people that are living within the area where I live, which is right off of 290 and used to be Bell Street, but it is 45093, Highway 290 business. It just so happened that on, about two weeks ago, at the most, my gas meter had gotten run over by someone speeding on the back road where I stayed. The concern is, as former Mayor Ron Leverett said, also is the fact that there is not a streetlight, there is not a speeding bump, there is not a yield sign. But I can guarantee you, when someone can flatten your gas meter all the way down, and I thank the city of Prairie View, I thank the city of Waller, as well as the other first responders that came and told me to evacuate my home and get out right now, because the entire community would have blown up. And that's how serious it is. I'm asking for the city to please consider the safety regulations that need to be put in place in this area. You have grass, you have tree limbs, you have branches, you have all kinds of safety issues that have not been addressed by the city. And I beg you to please look at that. I want to thank Mr. Perry for coming and doing the plumbing that was necessary for me to get my gas put back on, to have a gas meter put back up, because the city of Waller did respond on their part. And it's just a very serious situation. And it's not the first time. I am a longstanding member of the city of Prairie View. I have been born and raised in this city. My house was built in 1954. My parents willed it and gave it to me. So I'm just saying and asking, please come at any time down this back road and you will see the concerns that I have. Thank you for your time, sir.
Ms. Denise Watson.
Now, in the council, I just have a few concerns over past happenings concerning the council. Number one, at the meeting in July, Chief Solomon gave a thorough detailed job of our needing a K-9 unit. And the reaction from the councilmen, to me, appeared quite negative. One thing that was said was, we need more time. The report from Chief Solomon was detailed. Number one, there was no money that he was asking from the citizens of Prairie View. And certainly, there was no money being requested from the council. If we had purchased the K-9, it would cost us about $9,000 if I'm correct, based on what Chief told us. And this was free. But the council saw a need to vote against it. And at that time, that was some concern from those who were present. And I should have told the council that they were not in agreement with our not getting that K-9 unit. Something free and you're gonna vote against it? That becomes questionable to me. No, Ron Leverett, mm, is not the answer. I thought I heard you, mm. No, that is not, but I apologize if I didn't. I apologize. I apologize if I didn't. But these concerns between the citizen and the council definitely concern me. And we need to cooperate with one another. We have too much negativity and hatred in the world. And this is what I perceive as a citizen of Prairie View. If I was an opponent of the mayor and I was defeated, I will make sure I'm not gonna do anything to cooperate with him. Now, that's my perception of that. And we as a people need to come together and cooperate with one another for a common cause. The second thing that concerns me is, and of course, we had a grant for $350,000, almost another activity or something that was free, and most, well, some of the council, now that means, let me make a correction here, I apologize to X-Mil, Ron Leverett, two of the council voted against it. And the majority of the councilpeople voted for us to have the pipes replaced in Alta Vista subdivision. And those pipes have been there since the 50s. And if you live in Alta Vista, you turn on your faucet, you're gonna get discoloration of the water, a sediment's coming from the water. But our having and paying $350,000, why would the council have to vote against that? And the irony of the situation is that one councilman lives in Alta Vista. So why would you vote against it? That is a concern for me. And to me, there's no togetherness with us, among us as a people. And that's what we need to stop. Now, another thing, people, I think I have to, we're gonna go through this, say this real fast. During the building of the apartments for the students and the cricket field, I haven't ever witnessed so many, I'm not gonna use the fourth syllable, monosyllable, so many lives in all days of my life. It just doesn't make any sense. Okay? Now, let me read, I was expecting a message from my daughter, who works on campus. And I told her, I have a meeting at the house and I cannot assist you, just text me and that.
Ms. Webster, your time's up, did you need?
Yes, give me a couple of minutes. I must read this to back up.
I'm ready to hand out my AK.
This is the message that I, this is the message that I read from my phone. And I guess that this is the person name who did this message, text message or whatever. It came from a Deshawn, the last initial G.I. I don't know that person. But this is the message. But some of y'all thought I was playing politics. Mayor David Allen had lied to the university students and cars. Bottle arms are going off and furniture is broken. As soon as have to sleep, as soon as have to sleep in the student recreation center until further notice. This property failed inspection the very first time, and Mayor Allen found someone to push the inspection through. This isn't safe for any students to live. Now, let me make this a little talk. This, this came out on a Monday. On a Sunday, President Simmons sent a letter, and she said that, and I'm not taking off from Mayor Allen, she said that there was a shortage in housing, and that she gonna have to put the students in the recreation center until further notice. So I don't think that problem, and I'm not trying to defend him, lied with Mayor Allen. It's, I guess, a problem with the university to who accepted more students than they could accommodate. Now, let me make this commendation about Mayor Allen. And to me, that's what I want to say, shows that he is a concerned mayor. Number one, the first thing, I guess I didn't want, but I must get this in perfectly, when we had a problem in our county or community, it was either during Thanksgiving or the Christmas holidays, but I entertained my family. And he sent out a robo-call, stay in your house behind locked doors. Of course, you know, it was, it would shake you up, because I wonder how long would I have to be bothered with my people? And they are armed, seriously now, on a serious note, and they are armed within the same timeframe that night, we got a call that the person, the burglar or murderer had been apprehended and then low plantation. So to me, that shows that he cares. And that is another one I would like to cite, who would live not for senior citizens, but I know my time is far spent. So thank you so much for listening. Thank you for giving me that ambitious time. Appreciate it so much.
First item on the agenda, concern, take action for approval of the meeting minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 27, 2018. It's council's pleasure. Those minutes weren't in my package, so. None of them are in my package. Ms. Dickie, do we have those? I see one day in the council. Do y'all have yours? Do y'all have yours in the package?
This says 13 should be 18 maybe?
Not a minute. And the ones that sit there, that's not the correct minutes, any of that number. That's for the meet, the other meeting, that we approved. This is not the meeting.
You have a copy of the 13th because they were approved with corrections?
We missed in the two.
Okay, I will get you the two. But the 13th was simply because we approved with corrections, I wanted you guys to have a copy of what we.
So we'll pass, so we'll pass on one and two on this one, and pass it over to the next meeting?
Well, August 18th, this is the second meeting we haven't had those. Is there a reason why we don't have those minutes?
I just passed those out.
I don't have it, so if you have a copy, please. We should have the minutes for August 18th, that was almost a month ago.
I just passed them out.
Yes, the special meeting for August 18th. The only thing that was in the package was the agenda.
Right, that was the last meeting.
Yeah, Ryan was talking about the special meeting that we had.
And then I don't have the minutes for the last meeting, even.
I'm talking about the special meeting on the 18th.
Okay, we'll move the agenda until we see what we're gonna do there, if anything. Item number three, discuss, consider, and take action on requests for proposals returned submitted to the city for consideration of open city attorney services. And what we have, we have received five applications, and we have those in the office, and what we're gonna do is add that to the next city council agenda. And maybe we could scan, it's quite a bit, but we'll, we'll scan or copy to make that available to council between now and then for your review before seeking to make an appointment. Yes?
Also, on the RFP that was posted on TML, it said, it said, city named by one applicant to make oral presentation for the city council.
That's who we're doing the next meeting.
So we're gonna ask.
So, two questions. One, the city council's supposed to approve the RFP, so where, what are we doing that? Two, the timeframe, I'm assuming the timeframe you're saying is the next city council meeting, which is the September 20th, what'd you say? I'm asking, because that was the email I sent to you.
Okay, then what we'll do is, well, I think you asked for a copy of it, but what we'll do is, if council wants to approve the RFP, we'll put that on agenda in two weeks for approval.
What I'm requesting is, this is the process that the mayor brings to council. It's on the agenda to do this, and so my question is a timeframe, is are you saying that's a time for us to, where all RFPs need to be is September 24th? That's, that's a question, so. So is it the 24th? So usually, you would bring us the RFP, you're saying that on this date, we're going to, to close the date, and this is the date we're gonna open the package. And I'm simply asking, do you have that date so council can know and the general public can know so we can move forward?
That is not what we did when we brought in Attorney Cohen. But if that's what council wants, I'd be glad to do that. All I need to know is what you want, not what we possibly used to do. Do you want it on next agenda? Yes or no?
I think, I think we more of asking like, when the application process closes?
Yes, that was in the posting, yes.
He posted on the RFP that they, it got posted on August 14th, 2018, and it said, so proposals will be accepted by David Allen, mayor, until 4:00 PM Wednesday, August 29th.
Right, and so what I'm saying is, was it created on the 14th and it closed on the 29th? How many of you knew about that process? The answer is none of us. So I'm simply saying that whatever the process is, that we all be included, so we know the processes, so many wants to know the processes. So Mayor Allen's saying, if he wants us to pick a date, if we're saying that, there was a reason why we don't currently have an attorney, we haven't talked about that. Second thing is, are we using the same RFP that we put out to get the last attorney? And what's the timeframe, which means the mayor would say, hey, here's the RFP, we're gonna, I want the date to be this date, as far as closing, do y'all, you know, do y'all agree? And we all say yes, going forward. And the mayor would do what he, what he did currently as far as have this list. So all I'm saying is, I just need a date to where we're saying that, whether it's the 24th or whether, whatever it's gonna be, that we all know that it closes, and we're gonna have all the firms here that came to speak to us last time.
Okay, then let me answer your question. In all of our city ordinances, resolutions, and city charter, there is no such process. Now, we have five applications. If you'd like to have them reposted, we can do that. Right now, the plan is to have those five at the next council meeting in a couple of weeks. Unless council wants to do something different, I'll work with you. Just tell me what you want to do, and we'll do it.
I think voting for it, we should have some policy put in place for the RFP, that says, basically, we're posting listed online, that the date is already.
And it has come up at council meeting a couple of times, and that's what we propose to do. Hearing for the first time that it wanted to come to for approval of in front of council, but we can, we can do that. Going forward, council sets policy, there is no policy, so I go with what we've been doing. So what would council like to do?
I move that we.
I think that it was on the 24th.
We actually, we went to the 8th of October, or 24th? So, so part of, what we're simply saying is that we want, from this meeting notifying everybody, no, everyone knows that if RFP exists for attorney services, and then the close date is what date, we want it to be the 24th, which is our next meeting, or the meeting after that, which is.
It's already, it's already.
And you want to reopen, council? Because we have to post it. Do you want to reopen? Does it have to be in the papers?
I guess, let me ask a question. How could it close already if none of you seen RFP outside of it being online?
Because no one saw the one before that and the one before that.
We did.
No? Count? We do, hold on, hold on just a second. Council knew and has asked, when are we getting another city attorney? That's been asked on this panel a few times. So the fact that we were posting for a city attorney is nothing new. The fact that we needed one is nothing new. Now, all, all I want to do at this point is tell me what you want, so we can do it, and leave whatever you feel did or didn't happen, because we have no process. If we have no process, it's because council has not created a policy. That's council's job. My job is to run and move forward. So if there is no policy, I know we have to post it, we post it in the usual and customary places that we've always posted it. And what does council want to do for the next, the council meeting?
I asked the turn, I know we're getting short on our time schedules with you guys, so with you, next meeting, you guys are gonna be representatives, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, the intent is to represent you until you're represented by somebody else.
Okay, and then August 18th?
24th, September 24th.
When is the following meeting after the 8th? October 8th? October 8th? So, so part of, if, if, if.
Hold on a second. Councilman Johnson.
What I would like to do is, I move that we open the RFP to September 14th as the closing date, and then October 8th, we, we the meeting in which we have the attorneys come back and have a presentation.
Now, is that September 14th, councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir, September 14th, close date.
Okay, so we don't have time to post it? Because it would go in the paper, Wednesday, which is Friday.
24th, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, September 24th.
Okay.
I'll make see. As the close date, and then October 8th as the presentation date.
Got it. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, we probably moved in seconds that we open the city attorney services request for proposal until September 24th, when it closes, that's in my opinion. And then have the attorneys at our October 8th city council meeting to share and answer questions.
I'm ready.
Heard motion, ready for question? I'm ready.
I'm ready. So, and the RFP that was originally posted on TML, it has a statement of qualifications where it asks them to attach response to like names of the firm, you know, all the different things about them. Can we get a written copy of what, what they said there?
Yeah, we could. And then, just to throw this out, next meeting, our September 24th meeting, I will present our policies, so that way moving forward, we don't have to move what's the topic in which we want to open and close, and then a presentation. But please picture.
Any other radios? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, have the same right? Ayes have it. Item four.
Is there a reason why we don't have the engineering thing?
Well, there was one that didn't go down. They haven't been posted, but I got the free. Engineering? Engineering, I don't have it posted.
I have it posted, because if you look at the, I don't have it, but I'm assuming it was just here.
Here's the city engineering thing right here. Yeah, I haven't been posted yet, but this one, I guess.
So this is it? And so, I guess, the same thing kind of comes back to what we, what we just discussed.
Well, this is the review you said you didn't have on the city attorney, so now you have on the city engineer.
Okay. So this is the RFP, it's currently out, this is the draft, what is this?
This is what we're proposing to go out, that hasn't gone out yet.
Okay, do we have a time?
Council, you.
So usually, so if this is it, we'll look at this. But I'm asking, do you have a timeframe? You would say, hey, I would like to put this out with this proposed open date, close date, and to vote on this. So I'm asking, do you have a timeframe? Is it a month, two weeks, or you just want us to come back to?
Well, we can post it for two to four weeks. And again, I'm open and working with council on that. So Councilman Jones just mentioned he'd be coming back at the next meeting with the RFP policy. So I don't want to say something that's adverse to that. So working with council, we'll follow that out three weeks, four weeks. Just think about what, what type of professionals we're looking for and not rushing that time. So, no, that hasn't been said as yet. But now you have that for review and we can pick it up on the next meeting for the engineer. Item four, status and current planning and zoning applications at the next meeting. I'm not sure, we checked with Mr. Harrison. This was just to put it in front of us, because planning and zoning's last meeting had to be canceled, and we have some applications. So this is just a reminder for myself and the staff to check with them scheduling another meeting. So, again, that's just keeping counsel informed.
Were they gonna present something?
No, they were gonna kind of give us an update. Status on the applications was what was proposed there. But we can easily have them do that and have it at the next meeting. Since you wouldn't make it today, it could have been the weather. Item five, discuss, consider and take action on moving the public tax hearing separate September 11th at 6:00 PM at City Hall to September 17th, 6:00 PM at City Hall. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, mayor, city council members, department heads and residents of City of Prairie View. Yeah, I have to come before you. We had the wrong newspaper publication date when we passed the...